I'd like to call to order the Plan and Zone Commission meeting today, November 16th. I'd like to ask everybody in the audience to please turn off your cellphones.
It's the fifteenth.
Fifteen, thank you.
I'm not going to be that guy, but...
You are that guy. Thank you for correcting me, fifteenth. We do not have a public hearing tonight. We'll start with our regular meeting. We'll call Commissioner Tomlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Schneider.
Present.
Michael Berry is excused. Johnson?
Here.
Tomlin here. Ingram?
Present.
Hepner?
Here.
Bransguard and Reinards are excused. Manus?
Here.
Garrington?
Here.
Stulp, I don't see if he's excused or... Okay. Anyway, we have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin. Report of city council activity?
Sorry about that. So, we have a couple of items for you today. The first being that the final plat for Scrabble addition has been approved by city council. The rezoning for case REZ 22-05 has been moved, that's the Forest Grove rezoning, that has been moved to third consideration. And then the rezoning for REZ 22-06, which is the 516 West 35th Street rezoning, was also moved to second consideration. And it's also, which will happen this next Wednesday would be the vote on that. And there is an item on there to waive the third consideration and vote on both at the same time.
Thank you, Laura. Secretary's report?
Move the report.
Second.
Secretary's report's been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Hearing none, it will stay as printed. Complant, commission, anything?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Zoning activity, new business, Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight we have case...
I got it.
You got me?
Yes, I got it.
All right. Tonight we have case REZ 22-07, request of high properties on behalf of Shamrock Properties, LC, to rezone approximately 104.57 acres of land bounded by Veterans Memorial Parkway, Eastern Avenue, Interstate 80, and Jersey Ridge Road from SAG Agricultural District to R1 Single Family Residential District, 33 acres, R4 Single Family and Two Family Residential District, 20 acres, RMF Multi-Family Residential District, 35 acres, and C2 Corridor Commercial District, 16 acres. Staff recommends case REZ 22-07 be forwarded to the city council with a recommendation for approval, subject to the listed findings and conditions, and I so move.
Second. We have case REZ 22-07, it's been moved and seconded for discussion. Matt?
The subject property highlighted in yellow on the screen, it's just under 105 acres. It's located south of Interstate 80 between Jersey Ridge Road and Eastern Avenue. The site encompasses both the property north of Veterans Memorial Parkway as well as 16 acres south. It's historically been used for farming. Pheasant Creek does flow through the subject property, cutting it in half. So, there is some floodplain, which would be undevelopable. There is also a three-acre farmstead located in that northwest corner of the site that's not included within this application. The property is currently zoned under an agricultural zoning district. The properties along Jersey Ridge Road, as well as south of Vets, are zoned R1, which is the city's lowest-density single-family residential. The utility substation just south along Eastern Avenue is zoned R4, which is a moderate-density residential. And then to the west of the subject property, it's zoned Commercial Office Park, and that's currently undeveloped. The future land use map for this area, predominantly south of the interstate, it's shown as residential general. Pheasant Creek, as well as some of the drainage areas, are under a open space and public land use category. And then there's also a commercial node identified at the corner of, or at the intersection of Veterans Memorial Parkway and Eastern Avenue, identifying this area for potential future commercial and retail development. On the screen is the proposed layout of zoning districts submitted by the applicant. So, to the east of Pheasant Creek, they are petitioning 33 acres to be R1, so that's single-family residential at a low density. Just south of the interstate at the north and western portion is R4, which is single-family and two-family residential. So, that's about 20 acres of land, and that's a more moderate-density zoning district. At the center of the property, just north of Vets, the applicant's petitioning 35 acres for RMF Multi-Family Residential District. And then the 16 acres south of Vets, adjacent to Eastern Avenue, is petitioned for C2 Corridor Commercial. So, the purpose of the R1 district, that's really Davenport's lowest-density single-family neighborhoods, which consist of large lots and generous yards. The R4 district, single-family and two-family, a little bit more of a moderate-density residential district. The RMF Multi-Family Residential District, it's Davenport's highest density of residential development, which allows for a mixture of housing types. So, that includes townhomes, multifamily, two-family, and single-family semi-detached. And then the C2 Corridor Commercial District really allows for a mix of retail, personal service, and office-type uses along the city's arterial streets. So, on the screen is the concept plan submitted by the applicant. I want to emphasize that this is a concept plan, it's not a final development plan. So, this is used just for a reference. So, the overall lot sizes, building footprints, the street network, access points, attention ponds, those are all subject to change. And many of those items will be handled during the subdivision process. However, the overall design theme for this area is to establish a mixed-use development. So, you would have your lower-density single-family to the east of Pheasant Creek, more moderate-density single and two-family along the north. The center of the development, the applicant's showing townhomes. And then they are showing multifamily at the intersection of Vets and Eastern, just to the north. And then the area south of Veterans Memorial Parkway could be a potential mix of commercial. C2 does also allow for multifamily housing in townhomes as well. So, on the screen now is the applicant's concept plan with notes that have been added by staff with our recommendations. So, starting at the north, staff is recommending a 40-foot building setback along the interstate. And that's to be consistent with the condition that was recommended for the rezoning just a month ago along Forest Grove and Utica Ridge. The applicant's site plan does show a 50-foot setback. However, we went with 40 to be consistent with prior action. So, moving to the next one, staff is recommending that the applicant reserve half an acre for a pocket park within the residential multifamily zoning district. Reason for that being is that we feel that Pheasant Creek will offer green space and open areas for the single-family land uses. And would like to see a open space and gathering area for the multifamily development where there's a little bit higher density. Staff is also recommending, and we have it in our future plans for road improvements, a roundabout at Eastern Avenue and Veterans Memorial Parkway, and that the developer extend the roadway north and then provide an access point to the development. So, that would create a controlled intersection for residents to enter the site in a safe manner. And then staff is also recommending a roundabout located roughly between Eastern Avenue and then the east property line. And this would be to create a second controlled point of access to the development. And then at the south part of this map, staff is recommending that the applicant install landscape buffer along the C2 zoning district where it butts the existing R1 neighborhood, just to create additional separation between land uses. So, in terms of public input, the applicant held a neighborhood meeting on May 10th. Property owners within 200 feet were notified. And then a follow-up meeting was held on June 9th, and staff increased the notification area to 800 feet. City staff, as well as elected officials, were present at that meeting. Notices were also sent to the property owners within 200 feet notifying them of the public hearing on November 1st. I believe we had six people speak at that meeting. Comments generally pertain to traffic and access to the development as well as safety. There were some comments about density and buffering existing neighborhoods as well. Public hearing notice was also published in the Quad City Times. And to date, staff have received one formal protest petition from a resident along Jersey Ridge Road. So, staff is recommending that the case be forwarded to city council with a recommendation for approval, subject to listed findings and conditions. So, the first finding is that the zoning map amendment is consistent with the Davenport 2035 Future Land Use Plan, which identifies the property as residential general and open space and public land. The C2 Corridor Commercial District is consistent with the commercial node identified at the intersection of Vets and Eastern Avenue. The proposed zoning map amendment to R1, R4, RMF, and C2 is compatible with the zoning of nearby developed property. With the conditions recommended by staff, the proposed zoning map amendment will enable the area to be developed in a manner consistent with the surrounding area. With conditions requiring transportation improvements, the proposed zoning map amendment will promote the public health, safety, and welfare of the city. And then finally, the proposed amendment will not create any non-conformities following development. So, staff are recommending nine conditions. The first one being that when subdivided, no lot shall be zoned more than one zoning district. Two would be that a traffic study is required. This may include additional traffic safety measures that will be needed as development occurs. Three, Eastern Avenue shall be extended to the south property line of 7219 Eastern Avenue. So, that's that existing farmstead property. They have provided a minimum of one street connection to the subject property from the extended Eastern Avenue. Four would be to install a roundabout on Veterans Memorial Parkway located midway between the east and west boundaries of the subject property. Five, the right-of-way shall be dedicated as determined by the city for the purpose of constructing a roundabout at the intersection of Eastern Avenue and Veterans Memorial. Six, a landscape buffer yard shall be installed in accordance with Section 17.11 of the Davenport Zoning Ordinance along the south lot line where a budding property is owned R1 Single Family Residential District. So, this would prevent them from having to install one against the existing substation. Seven would be to provide a 40-foot setback along the north lot line where a budding the interstate. Eight, a minimum of half an acre shall be reserved as a pocket park within the western half of the RMF zoning district. And then nine would be to, well, the principal use of billboard be prohibited on property zone C2.
Thank you, Matt. Matt, on item three on the Eastern Avenue extension, is that full width or just half width? It doesn't say in the packet. I didn't... Normally, doesn't the developer only do half the street?
So, that would be required by subdivision code to do a minimum of 27 foot from back of curb to back of curb.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions of staff at this time? Commissioner Hepner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What's a commercial node? How do you define that? Get out your book.
Hold on one second.
Okay. I guess where I'm going with this is, we've got commercial nodes shown around the city. And is a commercial node 16 acres? Is it two acres?
So... I'll go. Give yourself a break. So, commercial node are clusters of generally more intense uses found either along existing urban corridors or along or at intersections of major streets in newly developed areas. Commercial node areas may contain commercial uses somewhat more intense than uses found elsewhere on urban corridors, as well as higher-density residential uses in office and service businesses. Commercial nodes should serve a population of about 5,000 people within half a mile. Ideally, commercial node areas should be architecturally integrated and designed to serve all modes of transportation. Pedestrian connections to the neighborhoods they serve are important. Therefore, master planning and customized zoning provisions for new commercial node areas should occur before development or redevelopment occurs.
Can you show me that map again real quick, commercial component?
Which one? Do you want this one?
No. Yeah, that's fine.
Or do you want the future?
This is fine. 16 acres of C2, was that what we had in mind when we talk about a commercial node?
I think it's appropriate, given the shape of the property.
It's a tricky, it's a tricky piece of land. I realize that. Okay. What's the height in that C2 area? What's the restriction?
45 feet.
Forty-five feet. We did something at North Park Mall not too long ago where we restricted height. I wonder if that might be appropriate here with the residents behind us on this. Maybe something we can talk about with the developer, the city can talk to them about. But I think we should pay attention to some of that as we move forward with this. I think it's an outstanding development, and I'm really happy to see something happen here. Just want to be aware of what's happening behind. That's all. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Hepner. Anybody else? Commissioner Snyder?
So, taking that question just a little bit further, again, remind me, please, again, and I think you've answered this before. Could there be convenience stores, gas stations, any of those kinds of things located in that 16 acres?
Yes. So, the C2 district does allow for gas stations as well as drive-throughs. And it also does allow for things like townhomes, as they showed kind of on the eastern portion of that C2 district.
As well as restaurants and retail and things along those lines.
Offices would be allowed as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Snyder. Commissioner Manus?
Thank you. I am wondering, staff, if on the other side of Eastern Avenue, we might see continuation of this commercial node being proposed there. What are your thoughts on that?
So, the land is currently zoned Commercial Office on the west side of Eastern already, both north and south of Veterans Memorial. It's actually quite an intensive zoning district. Unlike the other commercial districts, you can't do residential, but you can do up to industrial in that land. So, given that fact, C2 is a more conservative zoning district of this area.
So, we definitely will be seeing more intensive uses on that side.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Manus. Commissioner Garrington?
Could we see the slide with the traffic pattern, traffic partner again?
This is the one. Yep.
I don't, I see the two roundabouts. I do not see how the area in the R1 district gets onto the street.
So, they currently are showing just what would end up being a right-in, right-out from Veterans, subject to a transportation study. But what we are envisioning is it's likely going to be right-in, right-out out of that subdivision with probably a deceleration lane to allow people turning and to slow down in order to be able to make the turn. Again, subject to road alignment, there are things that need to be looked at, such as line of sight and length of the deceleration lane. So, it's possible that road may be scooted a little bit further to the west. But they do need a connection on that side for the, for the R1s. Otherwise, it's not going to meet the subdivision code.
Right. Also, there is, there's a roundabout where, for the C1. Otherwise, they're going to have to come in off of, is that Jersey Ridge on the left?
This is Eastern.
Eastern, yeah. Jersey Ridge is one to the right. Eastern. So, they're going to have to come in. There's going to be a, at least an opening somewhere on Eastern Avenue to get...
So, Eastern Avenue currently has temporary traffic signals at it now. It's in the city's CIP to do a roundabout there. So, that would be at the city's expense to construct that roundabout. This other roundabout would be at the developer's expense.
The would, the roundabout would not give you access into the, the commercial area.
To the south?
Mm-hmm.
Correct. So, there...
Would have to be another...
Right. And so, the transportation study would help finalize some of that. They, generally, rule of thumb for engineering is that a driveway can't be closer than 300 feet from an intersection. So, there is a little bit of room, and where they're proposing a drive would be appropriate. It is a little bit challenging because there is a raised median there. So, that it, there still needs to be some level of discussion with engineering on some of those pieces. But we believe that would be something that would be done both in the subdivision process as well as review of the civil plans.
I'm looking at the density of the R4. Depending on what kind of buildings, that could have an awful lot of children. And a half acre is not a lot of park for the children of that many homes, especially if those were townhouses or lower, lower income. You don't have a lot of, lot of space for children in there.
Right. So, the developer is utilizing some of the floodplain to provide additional open space. We just wanted to ensure that within the western piece of the residential multifamily, that there was some level. It is also consistent with the Forest Grove rezoning that we just had. That was a 51-acre rezoning, and we required a quarter-acre pocket park. So, this is 105. So, we thought it was appropriate to do half acre.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Garrington. Any additional questions from the commission at this time? Seeing none, would the petitioner like to step forward and explain their project?
Chairman, Commissioners, Dural High, High Development. We appreciate all the work the staff has put in, and we accept the condition. Commissioner Hepner, at the neighborhood meeting, we agreed to a two-story limit on the south side of Veterans Memorial. So, we'll enter into that agreement with the city and the development agreement.
Neighbors were happy with that.
Yep. And we'll, there's a lot of traffic. That's, that's been consistent since we started having the conversations. So, the traffic study, excuse me, traffic study will help us. And we'll continue to work with the city. We want to save the environment for all the people that live there and travel there. But we are excited about the development. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions of the petitioner? Commissioner Snyder?
I think I may have asked this before at the public hearing. But what do you anticipate to be the number of multifamily units? And what kind of, you know, the, the number of occupants that you think you'll have in total there?
So, the western corner by Eastern, we would anticipate there to be 80 to 160 units. Those will be smaller, one veteran minutes, kind of pulled up on the street on that note. And then the townhomes, we have 182 in that middle section. And I know that sounds like a lot, but that's 100 acres. So, it'll take...
And how many, what's the occupancy in each of those, more or less? Is it two or three bedrooms or?
In the townhomes, the townhomes have two and three bedrooms. They, they all have two-stall garages. So, they have all-street parking in the unit. They're, they're designed to be that model where the resident goes directly from their garage into their own unit.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Snyder. Laura?
Please stop with feedback from the developer related to Commissioner Hepner's comment about the height. Staff would propose if there, you can amend the condition, add an additional condition regarding height restriction. Generally, from a rule of thumb, we don't like to go lower than what a residential district is allowed by right. So, residential districts is 35 feet in height would be the maximum height allowed. So, I would propose adding a condition to restrict the height within the C2 district to 35 feet. If that's... Yeah, to restrict it to 35 feet.
Commissioner Tomlin?
Mr. Chairman, with that said, I would move or make a motion that we amend the conditions to include staff's recommendation for site or height restrictions.
Of 35 feet?
Of 35 feet. In the C2 district? In the C2 district. I'll second that.
The motion to add that condition, as Mr. Commissioner Tomlin explained, is on the table. Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded to talk. Seeing none, roll call, please, on that recommendation for amendment. Commissioner Tomlin?
Schneider?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Tomlin, yes. Hepner?
Yes.
Manus?
Yes.
And Garrington?
Yes.
The motion for the amendment carries, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin. Any additional questions for the petitioner? Seeing none, thank you. Appreciate it. Final questions for the commission of staff or any thoughts, opinions? Seeing none, roll call, please, Commissioner Tomlin?
Commissioner, I believe there might be people from the public that would like to comment.
Oh, sorry. Didn't mean to exclude you. Anybody in the audience like to step forward and speak either in favor or in opposition to? Final call? Seeing none? We are clear to take a vote. Commissioner Tomlin?
Johnson?
Yes.
Tomlin, yes. Hepner?
Yes.
Manus?
Yes.
Garrington?
Yes.
And Schneider?
Yes.
Main motion carries, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin. That would conclude the new business and zoning. We'll move on to subdivision activity. Commissioner Johnson, or I mean, Commissioner Hepner?
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight we have case ROW 22-5, Request of Corn Belt, capital L, L.C., to vacate unimproved right-of-way located south of Research Parkway and to the west of Interstate 80 Airport Industrial Park 12th Edition. Staff recommends the city Plan and Zoning Commission accept the listed findings to vacate the unimproved alley right-of-way located south of Research Parkway and case ROW 22-05 to the city council with a recommendation for approval, subject to the following findings and condition, and I so move.
Second.
Case ROW 22-05 has been moved and seconded for discussion. Matt?
Thank you. The subject right-of-way is highlighted in yellow on the right. So, it's located just south of Research Parkway. And then to the east of Hill and Dale Road is the one that angles northeast. So, the purpose is really to facilitate further development of the land just south of Research Parkway. Upon vacation, the city will immediately dedicate new right-of-way in a configuration that will better enable access to the lots, providing sufficient area for infrastructure improvements. Currently, there's just a dirt road that extends down there. So, the city envisioned something similar to Research Drive, which is just to the east. So, it'd be a north-south road terminating in a cul-de-sac. So, there's one lot that would need new right-of-way access. So, this area is zoned light industrial and also shown as industry on our future land use map. The right-of-way vacation process, it's a two-step process. The first is to determine if right-of-way is needed for public purposes. And then the second would be to negotiate and determine the conveyance to adjacent property owners. This would be handled with the city's legal department. So, there's no action by the Plan and Zone Commission. and zone commission for that. City staff notified property owners within 200 feet of the public hearing on November 1st. No members of the public have spoken, nor have staff received any comments from the So staff are recommending that the commission accept the listed findings to vacate the right-of-way, subject to the following findings and conditions. So the findings are, there's an excess of public right-of-way not required for city purposes. That would be largely the east-west portion of the right-of-way. And that the newly dedicated right-of-way will provide access to the lots south of Research Parkway. So the condition would be that upon vacation, the city shall immediately dedicate new right-of-way in a configuration that will better enable access to the lots south of Research Parkway while providing sufficient area for roadway improvements.
Thank you, Matt. Commissioners, any questions of staff at this time? Seeing none? Would the petitioner care to step forward and explain their project?
My name is Ryan Hince with Corn Belt Capital. Pretty self-explanatory. Tomorrow, I officially closed on the 5.6 acres to the north of this vacated property. Yeah, so not a ton of comments from me. It's just, really, it was, as I was looking at the 5.6 acres and this odd road that led to nothing, it only made sense to vacate it, so. That's all I got.
Thank you. Petitioners, any questions of the petitioner? Seeing none, you're excused.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any final questions or comments of staff? Seeing none, roll call, please. Commissioner Tomlin? Oh, does anybody else in the audience like to speak? Thank you. Commissioner Tomlin?
Let's do this. Tomlin, yes. Hepner?
Yes.
Manus?
Yes.
Garrington?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin.
Final case, F22-13, request of Klingern Associates on behalf of Davenport Venture LLC for a final plat of Brady 80 Business Center 3rd Edition. The two-lot subdivision is located at the end of Jason Way Court on 22.48 acres. Staff recommends the plan and zoning commission accept the listed findings and forward case F22-13 to the city council with a recommendation for approval, subject to the listed conditions, and I so move.
Okay.
Case F22-13 has been moved and seconded for discussion. Matt?
Yep. So the subject property is highlighted in yellow on the map, so it's located at the end of Jason Way Court. So on that street, there's the Cracker Barrel Restaurant, and then there's two hotels that also share that terminus with them. And then they're located just south of the interchange for I-80. And then the east lot line has the railroad right-of-way, and there is some creek that kind of flows next to that railroad right-of-way as well. On our zoning map, it's zoned for light industrial, so the purpose would be to facilitate development for a light industrial type of use. The future land use map does show this area as commercial corridor, though. So on the screen is the proposed final plat. They would be subdividing the land into two different lots for a light industrial development. So staff is recommending approval, subject to the listed findings and conditions. So the plat conforms with the comprehensive plan. The plat prepares the area for future development. And then the plat with conditions meet the subdivision requirements. So staff are recommending seven conditions. They're fairly straightforward. Some to point out might be number three. It is within the flight path for the airport, so the city airport manager would require a obstacle evaluation prior to any development taking place. And then there is a drainage and greenway easement that does run along the railroad tracks that would need to be established as well.
Thank you, Matt. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Commissioner Hepner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Matt, just kind of curious, as this area gets developed, if the city's looking at that intersection of Veterans and Brady, it's, it's challenging at certain times of day.
So I'll, I'll try to answer that.
Okay. It's a loaded question, I'm sorry.
It's tech, so unfortunately, it's under the Iowa DOT control. There has been conversations about it. I think they're also aware how bad that intersection is as well. So there are conversations that do happen between engineering division and the DOT. We don't have any formal plans on how that would get resolved at this point, though.
I've got some ideas.
Other roundabout?
Putting all his brain.
Divergent triangle.
Thank you, Commissioner Hepner. Any additional questions? Seeing none, would the petitioner like to step forward, please?
Good evening, Chairman, members. Davenport Venture is located in Michigan. I'm their local representation, surveyor. They.
Can you please identify yourself?
Oh, I'm Luke Miller with Klingern Associates.
Thank you.
Yes. The idea is, is there currently five different parcels that make up that 22.48 acres, and they want to subdivide it so it's prepared for development when they get to that point. The natural lot line between the two is a drainage way from the cul-de-sac along that to the creek. And as Matt mentioned, we can add an easement for that greenway or that, that open space along the creek there.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions of the petitioner? Final call? Seeing none? Thank you. Thank you. Would anybody in the audience like to step forward and discuss this petition? Thank you. Final call for questions, commissioners? Seeing none, roll call, please. Commissioner Tomlin?
Hepner?
Yes.
Manus?
Yes.
Garrington?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Tomlin, yes. Motion carries, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin.
That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Hepner. Move on to future business. Anything, Laura?
Yes, so we will carry on with our rezoning theme at the December meeting. So we do have another, yeah, another public hearing scheduled for the December 6th meeting. And then there are, I think there will be two final plats.
Thank you. Communications or other business at this time? Nothing from staff? Commissioners, any questions, thoughts? Seeing none?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
On the favor of adjournment, signify by aye. Opposed, same sign. We are officially adjourned. Thank you for your attendance.